And welcome to tonight's board event meeting held here at Silas Dean Middle School. This is very nice, thank you. The date is Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, and I would appreciate that you turn off your cell phone because this meeting is being recorded. Ellen, can you please do the roll call?
Thank you Chairperson Granado. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Cassio?
President.
Mrs. Evans? Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
President.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Ms. McCurdy?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mrs. Paradise? Vice Chairperson, Mr. Hill?
Here.
Chairperson, Mrs. Granado?
Present.
And Weatherfield High School Student Representative, Ms. Eden Fritz Aguar. Aguirre.
The board invited our Silas Dean Middle School Student Council students to come on up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I don't know exactly who we're going to help them. I don't know. I'll have to wait here. Okay. Thank you. And I'm sure we're going to see you in just in a few minutes, okay? Okay, Mr. Emmett, as our staff recognition tonight, I believe we have the student council?
We do. We have the student council from Silas Dean Middle School this evening. If I could invite the board members to come down and take a seat in the front row. We have a PowerPoint presentation. Come on up. Sit.
Good evening. I'm Kylie Cassio. This is Jen Toledo. We're the co-advisors of the Silas Dean Middle School Student Council. This is the first year in several years that we've had the student council, and it's been really exciting to have our students be interested in becoming school leaders.
Just going to introduce some of our members. Right here we have Emily Perota. And Logan Grantfield, that's our co-presidents, and one of our other members, Elisa Chau, that will be talking to you guys right.
I joined the student council because I enjoyed it at elementary school. Each student council, I'm learning that I'm a team player or not a close. My favorite part of student council is being one of the presidents. What we do is important because we're always going to score. I continue my role as a student leader because I enjoy doing it.
I joined the student council even in sixth grade. I was also a part of student council, and this year I wanted to be more involved with the school. And through the student council, I am learning to speak out my opinions and ideas more and be more open-minded to others with this. My favorite part of student council is making decisions that help our community, and all we do is important because our community is affected. And I would like to continue my role as a student leader in the future because it helps with what our community feels and does.
I joined student council because I was active in my old school, but we had to get voted in to become a role in student council. First student council, I'm learning that I'm a good team player and I like to organize stuff and manage people, things. My favorite part of student council is the meetings and having fun with friends. The most important thing that we do is giving facts to everybody and things that people like donating. We try to have everybody have a say in what we're going to do. And another thing is, I would like to continue my role in the future because it is going to give that work really.
Student council strives to give students an opportunity to live among their peers, create a sense of dignity and pride at SDMS, and emphasize the importance of caring for and helping others in our community.
Student council created posters to advertise events and made announcements to great students annually collected during middle school and during lunch. And one of our other events for PJ Day, we raised $386,37 cents for Estee CCMC by PJ Day for the kids. And Make-A-Wish, the one that we did just then, if you will, we took out, we raised $122 for Make-A-Wish for half-day.
All right, fundraising for SDMS. Student council is promoting a raffle now going on, and we are donating box tops. The box tops are used to provide scholarships and field trips and other stuff that students might need. Some of the presents are service gift cards, donuts, gift card, Philly pizza gift card, and homework free day off. These raffles will be going on for six weeks. One raffle, one winner will be to each by.
Decisions that matter. Using the resource budget, we chose to include Ottawa Island, Springfield, and East End for next year's calendar. And we organized a contest for students who wanted to design the next year's cover, and our winner was the lead on the next year's cover. Joining us in this year, Spirit is helping us develop new uniforms. Staff and students unite now to dress and outfit the year ahead.
Last dance, the number of eight theater produced, and many went in theaters who go to the dance for this, and many went to the football games instead. That's why one of our future plans is to identify and implement strategies to increase student attendance at dances. Other plans we have are to count all the box tops to earn for SDMS, and to seek out other fundraisers to help children and families.
Okay, thank you very much, all of you. That was excellent. Okay, next on tonight's agenda is approval of the minutes for our regular board event meeting, which was held on January 8th, 2019. Do I hear any corrections? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion? Oh.
Hi, sorry. Two corrections, just small spelling errors. Chorales is spelled C-H-O-R-A-L-A-I-R-D-S. And one of the managers, Nathan Labbe, his last name is spelled L-A-B-B-E-L.
Thank you. Anyone else? May I have a motion?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose. Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay, so Mrs. Evans, Ms. McCurdy. Did you give Mr. Cassio?
I gave Mr. Cassio.
Great, those minutes are approved. Also on tonight's agenda is approval of the minutes for a special board event meeting on January 4th, 2019. Does anyone see any corrections? May I have a motion to approve those minutes? Second? Okay, all in favor? I oppose. Any abstentions? So Mr. Cassio, Mrs. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Morris, Mr. Grantfield. Okay, great, so those minutes are approved. Is there anyone wishing from the audience to come on up to the podium for public comment? State your name and address, and please, can I remind you that you have a five-minute limit?
Barbara Sullivan, 6th grade, 12th. I'm here on behalf of the Weatherfield School Parents Council, and I wanted to let you know that this Thursday at 6:30, we're having a cyber seminar for parents. Scott Driscoll, he will be presenting. He's giving an overview of popular apps, programs, and online trends, discussing cyberbullying, sexting, and other dangers, social networking, and your digital footprint, and using technology while keeping you safe. So it's a parent-only event, and you're all welcome to come, and we'll send you a reminder.
Thank you. Thank you again.
It is Thursday, 6:30 at Web Elementary.
Thank you. Mr. Emmett has communication to share.
Thank you, Mrs. Granado. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Silas Dean Middle School. I'd like to express my appreciation to the folks in the Physical Services Department for their cleanup efforts in late Sunday storm. The ice accumulation coupled with the rapidly falling temperatures made that cleanup very difficult. Now, the storms aftermath proved to be challenging for auto-transportation as well as they had to work well into last night to clean snow and ice from the bus fleet to storage. Just a reminder, I'll be presenting the 2019-2020 Superintendent's proposed budget that the next regular weekly scheduled board meeting on February 12th. That meeting will be held in council chambers. The next quarterly update regarding our district strategic plan slated for presentation at the February 26th board meeting. And then finally, tonight, if I could just build on Mr. Sullivan's public comment, I strongly suggest that parents attend that event this week with Scott Driscoll. I think it's critically important that we have an understanding of what our kids are doing on social media. This is a real nice kind of a piggyback on what we've done through the Weatherfield Creative Arts Council where students had the opportunity for a presentation from Scott Driscoll earlier this year. So we see this as a team effort. We certainly appreciate the work of the WSPC. You might have seen recently on Channel 30, Mr. Driscoll just did a presentation, I believe it was in the print. It was very well received. So again, 6:30 at Web Elementary School, and as she had stated, this is for parents only, so this is kind of a different theme for parents as opposed to students. So hopefully they will make it out with that. That's for your case.
Thank you. Any questions for Michael? Okay, all right, well, we have an awful lot of motions tonight, so we'll get started on our action items. Kevin, would you read action or motion 6A for us?
So we moved that the Weatherfield Board of Education approve the closed transportation policy.
See, is there a second? Okay, any discussion on this, our new transportation policy changes?
Yes, this policy involves changing the door-to-door pickup and drop-off for kindergarten and will encompass cluster stops. This was one of those items that was left over from the days of half-day kindergarten. So this change that you're voting on this evening will be communicated to our incoming kindergarten parents over the course of the spring. And obviously, with what occurred in November at a bus stop where we had a student by himself that was assaulted and robbed, we're really looking for our parents in our community to kind of step up their vigilance. And this will eliminate parents of elementary students and kindergarten students having to figure out which ones go to the bus stop, which one stays with the child at home. So we're just looking for consistency here.
Any other discussion? Okay, it's hard to see over everybody there, okay.
Michael, we also looked at other municipalities too and found that this new policy is consistent with many of us around town.
That's absolutely correct, Mrs. Fitzpatrick. Mr. Kazaka is a business manager overseeing transportation, surveyed multiple towns, and almost all other towns utilize cluster stops as opposed to door-to-door transportation.
Okay, all right, go and take a vote then. All in favor? I oppose. Any abstentions? Motion 6A passes. Motion 6B, Diane, would you read it for us?
We moved that the Weatherfield Board of Education ratify the three-year agreement between the Weatherfield Board of Education and the Weatherfield Federation of Teachers.
Okay, is there a second?
Seven.
All right, any discussion on this? I have to say, and I'll say it out loud though, I'd love to say it, is there, is 15 extra minutes in that school day, which I'm thrilled at. As a teacher, I do hope the words hurry up can be eliminated from the teachers' vocabulary if they work with these children. Okay, Michael?
Yeah, so just to give the public some highlights with regard to this contract, this was a negotiated contract that did not need to go to arbitration. This contract will be effective July 1st, 2019. As Mrs. Granado stated, it adds 15 minutes instructional time to the student day, which will result in an additional 15 minutes per day as a teacher workday. Now, what we're doing with this, once we ratify this, is we are going to be sending this back to school committees to have teachers and administration have a say in how this is delineated. We're not looking at this as more than any time, we're looking at it as more instructional time. There will be a variety of different parameters we need to look at in terms of transportation, in terms of other bargaining unions, how that impacts them. So the expectation is this will go out to committee, and each committee will look at it. I know high school has already formulated their committee, they're already doing their work at what their schedule will look like. I know here at Silas Dean, there's some interest, and correcting some wrongness, Cassio, Miss Toledo, there's some interest in making some changes to the schedule anyway. Yes, I see two affirmatives there. So this would be a good opportunity to take a look at the schedule and make some tweaks in the way this 15 minutes. From a wage standpoint, 2019, 2020, a 1.1% increase plus step. 2020, 2021, 1.1% increase plus step. 2021, 2022, 1.1% increase plus step. There'll be a modest increase in stipend and in extra pay assignments. High school liaisons and middle school team leaders over the life contract. There'll be no increase for 1920, a 1% increase in 2021, and a 1% increase in 2021, 2022. We'll be maintaining the health savings account with district funding at 50% over the length of the contract. And there'll be an increase in employee health insurance premium, a cost share increase of 0.5% to 21% in 2019-20, to 22% in 2020-2021, and up to 23% in 2021-2022. So those are highlights that we should.
Okay, any other comments? All right, seeing none, we'll have a vote. Okay, sure?
I just want to say kudos for getting this done. It's really almost amazing that we got it done this easily, and both the staff as well as the administration's coming under this pressure.
Yes, I agree. All in favor? I oppose. Abstentions? Okay, motion 6B on the teacher's contract passes. Motion 6C, Elaine, would you read that for us, please?
We moved that the Board of Education ratify the nurses' contract, which goes from 2018 to 2021.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion?
Thank you, Mrs. Granado. Some highlights with regard to the nurses' contract. This particular contract is retro to July 1st, 2018. Within the scope of this contract, we negotiated the addition of one workday within a work year from 187 to 188 days. This is in order to provide necessary support over the summer months leading up to the start of the school year. From a wage perspective, 2018-19, a 2% general wage increase with no step. For 2019-2020, a 0% general wage increase with a step. And for 2020-2021, a 2% general wage increase plus step. We've also added an eighth step to the pay schedule beginning in the 2019-2020 school year. We've added a balloon payment option to the pay schedule, lessening the paycheck during the course of the school year, more in the final check at the end of the school year. That's consistent with what we've done with WFD. We've moved the first installment of the health savings account that the district funds from July to September. Employee health insurance premium cost share will increase by 1% to 21% in 2019-2020, and to 22% in 2020-2021. And finally, increasing the employee funding of town pension plan by a quarter percent to 6.25% in 2019-2020, and by another 0.25% in 2020-2021 to 6.25%.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor? I oppose. Any abstentions? Okay, so 6C passes. Keeping track here. We had a student and program and services meeting on January 15th, so most of this going forward now is curriculum. So John Morris, would you read motion 6D for us?
I'm getting the right move to approve the textbook adoption for chemistry level 1, modern chemistry, Sarcade, Sarcade, 2021.
Okay, second? Any discussion? I'm glad we're not taking chemistry.
If you read the book, you'd be very ready to not take it.
That's right.
Demire, this was a college-level textbook that I would do. It doesn't not look like you want to stay up here.
Now, I'd also note that choosing this book, that the teacher's library has got a poll of students that have been using it in the past year or so, so you got student feedback.
Okay, anyone else? All right, let's take the vote. All in favor? I oppose. Any abstentions? Motion 6D passes. Moving on to 6E, Ginger?
We moved that the Weatherfield Board of Education approve the new course, America Through the Eyes of Women, at Weatherfield High School.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I'm fascinated with this meeting that night. It was just great. Do I see a hand up down there, Chris?
Yes, I've looked at this curriculum, and I think 8 or 97% is pretty on point. I would make a point, though, that there are many people here that are listed, this is a question I'll have in subsequent motions, on curriculum, where we list specific texts, and then we list names of either authors or figures identified with that era. And my question is, does that mean that this will be given to the discretion of instructors to pick various source material that have been related, authored by these people listed? Or is there specific text? For example, we all know that Betty Friedan had an extremely successful book, which is seen as the sort of initial manuscript for feminism. But Sylvia Plath is known for, and Emily Dickinson are obviously known for all sorts of works, as Alice Walker. So is that the general point of this curriculum that we showed? I apologize for not being able to read when this was discussed, probably wasn't.
I think those of us who were there could answer this, that you do see the required texts on there for the course, and then the others are supplemental, which they do have, and they could supplement for the amount that they need, but that would be by the discretion of the teacher. And some of them are, like there is a TED Talk in there, Sylvia Plath, there could be some of her work, some of her poetry.
Yeah, I wasn't particularly focused on any individual, just saying, is this, and again, is this an inclusive or restricted list of these particular authors and leaders or acknowledged people in this era that we're trying to focus on? Or would an instructor have allowed you to add other materials and other sources?
Sally, you want to answer that? Thank you. I would think that the teacher would have discretion, Sally will answer for us.
Good evening. Yes, there are some required texts identified, but there are also some teacher choice. There also been taught more student choice in different texts, so it is a mixture of what you're asked about, both required and choice, but from teacher, also some choice from the student, given a variety of texts.
Okay, because I'm going to make a, at least with this text, I will say there are other women identified with other spectrums of political thought that are not represented here. I would say this is quite one part of the spectrum. That's all I'll say about it without getting into micromanaging the curriculum, which I don't intend to do, but I see this list as fairly glaring in many, I think, other potential leaders who have written books about women and their perspective and their growth during the American period of history, Margaret Chase Smith, Schlafly, people that some may politically quarrel with, but certainly meet the standard. And I don't see anyone from that sort of bandwidth, as it were, because clearly there are people here with serious political backgrounds, which is great, I think that's appropriate, but I'm just curious as to why.
Definitely, I'm in the suggested list, and so I'd be happy to pass on some of those names and suggestions for teachers to consider.
Sure.
And so really, it's under that suggested list. Please kind of go to, I was a first-year teacher, teaching this course, kind of go-to place provides some support.
I think it's an excellent list, look at me, I'm just saying there's some other, I think there's some other perspectives that at least could be offered or thrown out there, whether they choose to use them or not, it's certainly up to the class, the teachers, and the students, I just want to put that.
Yeah, well, definitely, we have to pass on the suggestions, but I don't think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? I oppose. Any abstentions? So motion 6E passes. And Ginger, would you read motion 6F for us?
Which goes to 6E and moves for the approval of the curriculum that goes with that same class, America Through the Eyes of Women.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, done, all right. All in favor? I oppose. Any abstentions? Motion 6F passes. Motion 6G, Chris, would you read that for us?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Thank you. Recommended motion, approval of the new course proposal, cultural change in America, referenced before senior inclusion.
Okay, we have a second there. Any discussion?
I just, again, I want to say, I think a lot of these curriculum choices are excellent. This is another one, I think it is. Obviously, good work on the partners committee.
All right, all in favor? I oppose. Any abstentions? 6G passes. 6H, Chris?
Tiring me out, ma'am. Recommended motion, approval of the new curriculum, cultural change in America, with its 4D in the back.
Want a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? I oppose. Any abstentions? 6G. Because I'm going to make a, at least with this text, I will say there are other women identified with other spectrums of political thought that are not represented here. I would say this is quite one part of the spectrum. That's all to say about it without getting into micromanaging the curriculum, which I don't intend to do, but I see this list as fairly glaring in many, I think, other potential leaders who have written books about women and their perspective and their growth during the American history, Martin Luther Smith, and Schlafly, people that some may politically quarrel with, but certainly meet the standard. And I don't see any one from that sort of bandwidth, as it were, because clearly there are people here with serious political backgrounds, which is great, and I think that's appropriate, but I'm just curious as to why.
Just separate that as the exhaustive list, and so I'd be happy to pass on some of those names and suggestions for teachers to consider.
Sure.
And so really, it's under that suggested list. Place kind of a go-to, if I was a first-year teacher teaching this course, kind of a go-to place, provides some support.
I think it's an excellent list, look at me wrong, I'm just saying there's some other, I think there's some other perspectives that at least could be offered or thrown out there, whether they choose to use them or not, it's certainly up to the class, the teachers, and the students, I just wanted to put that.
Yeah, well, definitely, we have to pass on the suggestions, regardless of what we think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So motion six E passes. And Ginger, would you read motion six F for us?
Which goes to six E and moves for the approval of the curriculum that goes with that same plan, America Through the Eyes of Women.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, done, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion six F passes. Motion six G, Chris, would you read that for us?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Thank you. Recommended motion, approval of the new course proposal, cultural change in America, reference four C, you should.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second there? Any discussion?
I just, again, I want to say, I think a lot of these curriculum choices are excellent. This is another one, I think it is. Obviously, good work on the partners committee, we've got to get that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Six G passes. Six H, Chris?
Tiring me out, ma'am. Recommended motion, approval of the new curriculum, cultural change in America, if it's four D, okay.
Want a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Six H passes. Six I, Kevin?
With the approval of new course proposal, basically, that's four E.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Good, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Six I passes. Six J, Kevin?
With the approval of new curriculum, basically, that's four I.
Okay, second there, anyone?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Six J passes. Six K, John Cassio?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve the new course proposal, The American Dream, reference four G.
Okay, second. Second over here. Is there any discussion on this? Don't you love the titles of these new courses? I love them. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Six K passes. Six L, John, again?
Yep, before I make the motion, I have to, too, want to thank the programs, Student Programs and Services Committee. I did serve on that, and it is a lot of work, and I thank the people on that committee, the board members, staff, faculty. There's a lot of good things that are going on with that, I thank you. I'd like to make the following motion to approve, approval of the new curriculum for The American Dream, reference four H.
Okay, second, please. All right, any discussion? And you're right, John, it was a lot of work, especially on the part of the teachers to formulate all this. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Six L passes. Last two. Six M, Kelly?
Move that the Board of Education approves the WHS course deletion, English, grade 11, levels one and two, reference four I.
Okay, second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion six M passes. And our last one, motion six N, Kelly?
Move that the Board of Education approves the WHS course deletion, English, grade 11, levels one and two, reference four J.
Second.
Got a second in there? Any discussion? Elaine?
Having taught the grade five many years ago, I just want to make people aware that some of the changes in this curriculum is state-vanated. It's not our choice only, but the state-vanated change, especially in grade six coming to work here.
When was the last year the social studies curriculum was updated?
Years.
Years! Yeah, so I, you know, I'm glad this is getting done, very glad. All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So six N passes. That was the most we've ever had. That was a nice, great student program and services meeting, too. All right, tonight we have a presentation from the United Way on the ALICE data, and ALICE is an acronym for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. So we thank you.
And I just want to say that this was a great opportunity, as I have embarked this year on doing more in the way of external work. One of the benefits of that is reaching out into the community and having the opportunity to meet with the folks from the United Way, and this data is really compelling. It affects us here in Weatherfield, as it does towns and cities across the greater Hartford area. So I look forward to the presentation this evening. You have a PowerPoint presentation as well?
We do indeed.
Okay.
Up front, or?
Need to be down front.
Good evening, everyone. Really appreciate this opportunity to be here with the Board of Education and with residents of Weatherfield. My name is Paula Gilberto, and I'm the president and CEO of the local United Way, United Way of Central and Northeastern Connecticut. With me is Maura Cook. Maura is the Director of Community Engagement and Marketing Communications for United Way, and we wanted to have an opportunity to have a conversation with you about ALICE. Also want to thank the superintendent. It was a wonderful opportunity that we had, in meeting with Michael and member of his team, to just raise awareness about a very special group of people, many of whom are members of our family, maybe ourselves, maybe families that we grew up with. But basically, the concept around ALICE is to put a human face on those individuals that despite working hard, very, very hard, are having trouble making ends meet. ALICE is an acronym, we'll get to that in a second, and the acronym stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. ALICE households are the ones that, again, they're making minimum wage, they might be making a little bit more than minimum wage, but the cost of living in Connecticut in certain communities is outpacing their ability to be able to afford the most basics. When we talk about the basics, we're talking about housing, food, transportation, childcare, and healthcare. Connecticut United Ways, and there are 15 of us in the state of Connecticut, got together six years ago to develop the first ALICE report. This is our third. Our commitment is to do this every two years so that we can see whether economic conditions for families are changing or not, and also take a look at what we as an organization can do, and what other organizations can do by partnering together to really help ensure that all families are financially secure and moving to financial independence. One of the things about ALICE is that these households live in each and every community in the state of Connecticut. So in each of the 169 communities in the state of Connecticut, there are households that are struggling to make ends meet. When we take a look at the entire state, what we know is that approximately 10% of Connecticut's population is at or below the federal poverty level. 30% of Connecticut's population is just above that federal poverty level, but not earning enough as a household to afford the basics. When you combine the two together, that means four out of 10 households in the state of Connecticut are struggling to make ends meet. That same number, 40%, or four out of every 10 households, is true of the 40 communities that your local United Way serves. Now, the good news here is that over the six years that we've been doing this report, we've seen a slight decrease in the number of households that are living at or below the federal poverty level. So that is good news. But what we've seen, however, on the other side of it is, while fewer households are living at or below the federal poverty level, more are in that portion where they're just above the federal poverty level, so no longer qualifying for a certain public assistance, yet below the economic threshold of making ends meet. My dad was a school janitor and grew up in New Britain. We were from an ALICE household. My mother worked off and on in retail. And again, these are households similar to households in Weatherfield, where people are working and working hard, but again, the cost of living is not keeping pace, or their wages and their household income is not keeping pace with overall cost of living. There's a full report that's available to you. What we presented here tonight are just the highlights. We certainly, we have the link to the full report, you can get that by downloading it online, and I would encourage you to take a look at it for a couple reasons. It's very rich in data, and secondly, it's a lot easier to read than what you're seeing here on screen. But again, just to put it in context, that we have seen this increase over a period of time in terms of this growing disparity with respect to what households are earning, but also what's needed to do better than just make ends meet. And what this shows is, over the years that we've done the report, the dark blue bar, the number of households that are below the federal poverty level, that next blue line or blue box, which are the households that are above federal poverty but below an income threshold to make ends meet, and then those households that are above. So again, four out of 10 households statewide, four out of 10 households in our region. There's another piece here that's an interesting dynamic, and that has to do with the fact that we have relatively low unemployment in the state, relatively low unemployment. So again, good news story, we have more people working than worked before. But one of the challenges is, is that the growth in jobs, by and large, are not jobs that pay families enough to be able to afford the basics. When we take a look at it in terms of race and ethnicity, what we find is that, and disaggregating it by race and ethnicity, is that the largest increases are among black households, 24% increase in ALICE households, Hispanic households, which increased by 34%, and Asian households, which increased by 43%. So again, growing disparity when we take a look at race and ethnicity. The only households that saw a decrease from the last report were white and Asian households under age 25, and white households, 25 to 44 years old, and white senior households. So again, continued growing disparity when we take a look at race and ethnicity. Some emerging trends in Connecticut that we're all keeping our eye on. So there's a significant amount of market instability. Any of us that have ever taken an Uber or a Lyft know that there's a growing economy in terms of people who are self-employed, and they're earning a living by catching together certain jobs. So the good news is that we have a lot of folks that are entrepreneurial, but the other side of that is, these are not necessarily wages that one can count on. We tend to refer to this as the gig economy. So these are individuals that are living job to job, project to project, or they're on-demand jobs. In addition to that, a lot of these occupations don't have any benefits attached to them. So you have fluctuating wages, and you don't have benefits that are associated. So it makes it really difficult to arrange for childcare, makes it very difficult to qualify for a mortgage, et cetera. We're also seeing growing inequity in terms of health. So the cost of health and the access to health, as well as what's called the wealth-health gap, or the social determinants of health, personalized medicine, et cetera. And then lastly, significant changes in terms of the American household, right? So the growth of the millennial population, maybe boomers that are aging out of the workforce, and migration patterns in and out of Connecticut. When you see the full report, you'll notice that if we did not have foreign immigration into the state, Connecticut's population change would have been negative overall in 2016. Now, let's take a look at our 40 towns. So again, your local United Way, we're headquartered in Hartford, we go west to New Britain, north to Massachusetts, out to Wyndham, and then here in Weatherfield, Marlborough, Rocky Hill, in the southern part of the state. So again, four out of 10 households are living below the ALICE threshold. And as you can see from this slide, we have 12% at or below the federal poverty level, a balance above, but not enough to make ends meet, and roughly six out of 10 households that are faring well, pretty much mirrors the entire state. But let's take another look in terms of what would it mean to be able to make ends meet according to local market conditions. So we're looking at the cost locally of housing, of childcare, of food, of transportation, of healthcare. Technology is a must for households, all of you know that, you know, the ability to communicate by cellphone or smartphone. So all of this woven into it. And what this shows is that in our region, in our 40-town regions, a single adult would need to make close to $22,000 to $24,000 annually in order to afford the basics. That's a single household. And that, by the way, is roughly $11 an hour to $12 an hour in terms of pay. But we've also lumped that up against what the most expensive household is, and any of you who have had children or have nieces and nephews, you can appreciate this. The most expensive household is one that has two adults and has two preschoolers. And that's because of the cost of childcare and quality childcare in order to ensure children are off to the best start possible when they enter kindergarten. And in this case, a family afford in our region would need to make close to $72,000 to nearly $79,000 annually to not compromise on food, housing, healthcare, childcare, and transportation. And what that comes out to in terms of hourly wages would be nearly $35 an hour to nearly $40 an hour. Some, a few other things with respect to ALICE in our region. Again, as I said, ALICE households are in each and every community in the state of Connecticut. There are only two towns in our 40-town service area that have fewer than 20% of households living below the ALICE threshold, and that's Hebron and Tolliver. More than half of the towns in our service area have seen an increase in the number of ALICE households since the last report was done in 2016. About a quarter of our towns did see decrease in ALICE households, so that's great. And there were a good number that were the same or slightly decreased. But we've seen some other trends, and that has to do with the towns bordering Hartford, where we've seen overall an increase with a couple decreases in communities. So we've seen an increase in Bloomfield as an example, but a slight decrease in West Hartford. Some towns, trends that were inconsistent across the region, again, Farmington Valley towns, we have a few that increased and a few that decreased, so we're having conversations in communities about that. And among the 10 towns with the lowest overall proportion of ALICE households, we saw six that increased over a period of time. So again, the value of having done this report now three times over six years is that we're taking a look at some trend lines. The highest proportion of ALICE households, probably no surprise to you, go to our urban centers in terms of Hartford. Three out of every four households are not earning enough to make ends meet in the city of Hartford. New Britain, which is my hometown, two out of every three families are not earning enough as a household to make ends meet. Wyndham, East Hartford, Mansfield, Vernon, all significantly high. What about here in Weatherfield, which was a point of conversation with the superintendent? So in Weatherfield, according to our latest report, 34% of households are living below the ALICE threshold. Of that, 7% are below the federal poverty level, and 27% are above that, but again, below the earnings to make ends meet. Families are getting by, but again, making some tough choices. And one of the things that we've been meeting with the superintendent about and others to try and get your perspective and your insight as to what's happening in your community is that we've seen an 18% increase in households living below the ALICE threshold since our first report was done in 2014. So we're curious about that in terms of your insight as to what's behind that, okay? Are you seeing anything in particular, any trends, et cetera? Are there ways in which, and I just want to emphasize this, ways in which we can partner to ensure that all households are financially secure, financially stable, because, first of all, we want all that for all families, but we also know the correlation that happens in terms of health outcomes and student achievement outcomes when families are in a financially precarious position. So a point of conversation for us on that. Just a little bit about what we are doing. So ALICE households, again, there's a lot that's going on here in terms of housing, transportation, healthcare, et cetera, is going to require all of us to address this. Our United Way, with your support and the support of other contributors... Our United Way, with your support and the support of other contributors, is going to ensure that early childhood education is accessible, and it's also quality. So the extent to which we're able to provide funding to reduce the cost of quality childcare for working households, we want to do that. In addition, with your support and the support of other contributors, we're placing great emphasis on job training programs for jobs that exist in our region. So high demand in healthcare, high demand in manufacturing, and we're working with partners to ensure we're connecting residents that are unemployed or underemployed with the right training and certification and connection to employers to meet their needs, but also to increase household income. We are also putting resources to ensure that food is available, so it's healthy, it's nutritious, and it's accessible, not only during the school year, but during the summer, when many children don't have access to the kind of support that they would get through schools during the course of the school year. And these are the targets that we've established for the coming year with the support of contributors. I'm going to ask Maura to step up and talk a bit about the ALIS challenge, because this is an area where we feel we can best partner with you.
Thank you, Paula, and thank you all for having us here tonight. So as we looked at the data for this year's report, we found that, as Paula mentioned, we saw some swings and some spikes in about 10 to 12 communities. And so our team took a really hard look at that. As an organization, we are committed to helping all ALIS families in our region, which you can see is a large number and a somewhat growing number. And we know that we need to continue to expand and accelerate the work that we're doing to reach families who need access to services that will allow them to make more than ends meet. We've been hearing a lot lately, in addition to the ALIS report, from people across the country, saying that many of our families do not have enough savings or assets to make it without even one paycheck, even one missed paycheck, right? We know this. So what can we do? We also looked at what great things are already happening. We know that here, thanks to your team in Weathersfield, we have some great things happening for families who need access to quality early childhood education, who need access to healthy food. We went out, we met with the interaction teams, we met with the superintendent, we met with the early childhood folks, and we heard great things that are happening, and in every case that there's more that we can do. So in February, we plan to launch the ALIS challenge. And our goal is to engage residents, engage leaders like you, engage families, engage students even, in looking at what can we do to make a difference here in Weathersfield for ALIS families. In our United Way, with our community investment funds and with the help of some of our corporate partners, are committed to making an investment and reward to Weathersfield to support a solution that is designed by the community. So our goal is to work with the superintendent and others to launch this challenge in February, to bring folks together, to talk more about what's behind that, to talk more about what's standing in the way and what can be done, you know, within a year's time, to make a difference. So we wanted to share that with you tonight, we wanted to share the data with you tonight, we wanted to share that we're here to be your partner in finding solutions. We've seen a lot of great work happen over the years, and we know that there's more that we can do.
So we know that we've covered a lot, and we've thrown a lot at you, absent having access to the full report, which again, you can find online, but just if there are any questions or anything that we can do, any takeaways?
And then hazards, the radical, radical thing that you have, again, we'll think of the new proposal that some of them have made, is that, is that a gross one that?
Gross. Gross.
I have a question. Work and transit management, the government's second board, or second manager, one is called the public, and the second board is the chairman. Social determinants and personal medicine, biochemistry, and, uh, bio. Can you explain to me what that actually is? Family private, public, public. First genetic engineering policy.
These were all part of what the researchers found in terms of families of needs that may be able to opt into and to buy concierge services or medical care, that might be able to buy into more advances in terms of medical care than families that don't have that type of income. So it's spelled out in the report with respect to what happens in terms of wealth inequity in households. And again, if you have the means to buy into some of this higher-level diagnostic preventative care, et cetera, versus those that are more reliant perhaps on the public health system?
You are aware, um, of, 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 of,[982.13] story with your kids, it's expensive to the connect, and it's expensive to the connect people over anything, part of the airboat, then you must address that as opposed to the underlying causes of that, which are expensive, particularly for people, you know, as I was thinking, that has high spending rates, it's a fact, including policies issued by legislation, taxation policy by the legislature, expanded by the legislature, all these things that tech bottom line, but there's nothing in there about policies that can create this situation, it's not a function necessarily. It's much people working out a particular skill, like the compensation, obviously struggling to make that work, but you're not talking about the better side of the issue, the cost, causes those costs, and why we're using accommodation in our own back, quite rightly shown, the most disturbing part of this, how, what I call five, are three, four, five, three, four, three, two, one, you're supposed to stand up, grow, rather than, they're trying to use this force of the function, that we want to join it on the, I'm sure, the, the struggle, other ways to get it off, but just to say, we're struggling, and the airboat is a piece of action to resolve that, which is an honest assumption of law, but we was half, we was half the argument on the, on the, they're not providing the opportunity to divorce, but I assume you're not blocking, you know, the, the, that's about the same thing.
So I believe that you had access, we can make sure that you have the need to the full report, and you know in the report that the researchers do comment on the effect of public policy, all of this, they do have areas in there, we just were presenting tonight the highlights of it. So all points well taken, it is very complex, there's a lot to this, again, we're just presenting the highlights and we recommend the full report because it gets into those areas that you cited in this review. I thought that it was, and if not, we can provide it.
Yeah.
Alice dot C T, United Way dot org.
And my question, the source side of all this, I'm assuming, to help, to, these numbers, which I guess you're part of, each one has, they extrapolate from a lot of the sources, resources, census sources, I mean, how do all these numbers, I mean, also, I guess it's not.
So all of the sources or all of the data that's in the report are cited in the report?
In the full.
In the full report, that's right.
How was the first one, the whole of that, what did you have, assuming, assuming the, the housing, six oh eight, seven, five, you tested the average of the area.
Correct. That's correct.
Correct.
Right, so we're taking a look at central Connecticut, which could be different than the housing costs in Lower Fairfield County than the housing costs up in the northeastern portion of the state?
Is this a regional?
Correct, yes, it is.
This is a great report, I don't know if you've ever met her, but you knew her back before this.
Great.
And now, some final asks.
That's good to know. So again, our intent tonight was to raise awareness about Alice and point to these, I'm sorry, you have a question?
One more question, have you part of the other town government for boys' education, can I get myself, whether you, hope to take away?
Sure, sure, so over the course of the six years, first of all, a snapshot in terms of all of the Alice reports have been presented to our elected officials, and so for all of the state reps and for our state senators, they have this information, for the state reps, it's localized to the communities that they serve, there's a forum on February 25th where the Alice report is being presented that's open to the public. In terms of specific municipalities and specific school districts, we make sure that everyone is aware of this, we have been having follow-up conversations certainly with Hartford, with New Britain, with East Hartford, with Wyndham, with Bloomfield, we will also be following up with Enfield and East Windsor is in that next, right, and Verona as well. And so again, I think what it is doing is it's prompting discussion and for local communities to get together to see, is there something additional here to pursue, to learn more about, and is there any way in which we can partner together to impact what we can? So again, with our particularly United Way, we've been working hard at ensuring that quality early childhood education is accessible and affordable to households, so that's one way, but that may be different in another community where perhaps they want to take a look at perhaps food and ensuring that food is accessible. So we think, based on our conversations with different municipal leaders and school leaders, is that the local partnership will be different community to community based on the assets that a community already has and the additional opportunities to bring to the table.
I would just add too, that we have in the past funded programs in school districts and program towns and municipalities that are aimed at getting at some of these challenges, so, you know, transitioning to inner, for persons with no preschool experience, you know, a two-on-one kiosk in City Hall, so there are other examples that we have prepared to share with residents and share with communities about what has worked. Ultimately, every community is different, or well, it's to me, every community where they are, but we do certainly have quality samples and they start out well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That's right. Thank you very much. I also think that a very important point of this is that town council and board of vets in our small towns know the constraints on families as we're decision makers and moving forward in some of our policies and decisions, so thank you. So our board meetings held, we had our special board of vet meeting on January 14th, Elaine, will you speak to that?
Yeah, this was a continuation of a grievance hearing set by a peer professional group, and we requested that in the continuance we get further information, but that information wasn't really presented to us, so the grievance committee denied the grievance.
Thank you, Elaine. All right, then we had student program and services on January 15th, John Morris?
Well, this is easy because we just approved all of the various course changes and the textbooks that we talked about at that meeting, so there's not a lot to add, but we've already done it all.
And our wellness committee was on January 16th, Diane?
Yes, we met last Thursday, I believe, and discussed use of an anti-bullying app that we had seen at West Hartford and Grandview and some other area boards that are using. Michael showed us the app, which was called anonymous alerts, and we discussed that, and we're going to need some more information on that, it's an app that students have that they can report bullying or they can report other students in crisis, and that's going to be used at West Hartford and I think Southwood or Grandview, you're looking at some other , Stafford?
Stafford.
Stafford was the other app, so we're doing some further research into that, but it's growing, incorporating that to whether to go. Michael also gave some presentation on the vaping that's going on and some different types of technology that we've incorporated into the school to monitor that, and I don't know if anyone saw this, but this afternoon I got an alert that more than high school of course students had to be rushed to the hospital to do the vaping, so.
They were banned.
Yeah, and it's, it's growing. So we're going to be investigating that further, the cost, this technology isn't being used in Connecticut, so hopefully maybe we can kind of deal on that. We also, Chris had brought up to our attention the prescription drug safety program, and we talked about seeing if we can incorporate that to the eighth and ninth grade curriculums, health curriculum, there's also some of this, on the state and national level, too, that we can incorporate. John, updated some of the social, emotional leader-to-leader, the training that's been going on and how we're assessing the success of that, which has recently held a workshop for a big team, with the school psychologists, all sorts of those, or speech books, and some improvements for that, and then kind of rolling it out with the teachers, so that's where we are.
Thank you. Finance and Information Management Committee, which we just left, Kevin?
Thank you, yeah, we recently convened prior to this meeting, Mr. Kazakha from the business office noted that we are currently nineteen thousand seven hundred and four dollars under budget year-over-year. The risk and exposures to this have increased driven by two major issues, transportation costs is one hundred and two thousand over budget, this is due to the number of vehicles we have transporting to the Discovery Academy, as well as several health placements, and also we have a hundred thousand dollar increase regarding natural gas and electricity costs, mostly due to the high school, Mr. Kazakha has already done outreach to every source to kind of determine what the actual cause and major reason for the increase. In terms of savings at this point, we have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings regarding new hires for registrations and retirements, a hundred and seventeen thousand regarding the savings to folks in the HSA, and our ADA and Stride programs continue to save the district money of about a hundred and sixty thousand, I think it was, those students in house.
Kevin, what was the risk and exposure number? Was that a number?
Overall, a hundred and three hundred and sixty two.
Anyone else with a question for Kevin, John?
I have questions, but I have a report.
Okay, John, thank you.
You done, Kevin?
The floor's yours.
The floor's yours, John, go ahead.
Thank you. The parade committee, Memorial Day Parade Committee met on January 16th as well, the parade will take place this year on May 25th, the same setup and lineup as last year, same format. This year, we are looking at a theme for honoring Gold Star families, something a little bit different, and we're, you know, moving into, you know, trying to capture a lot of different ideas and emotion. So we have been working with the Commissioner of Veteran Affairs to see if we can locate families in Weathersfield, and like we did last year, we honored those Weathersfield employees, residents that were involved in the military as well. So we're on a roll, and we hope all that will have speakers and grand marshals for the parade, so we've got a great committee and we're moving forward.
Thank you, any questions for John? Okay, also on the agenda was the WEP meeting, so I'm going to read to that, the Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative met on Monday, January 24th, and the mission of WEP is that all Weathersfield children, birth to eight, are healthy, developmentally successful learners and connected to the community. Kim Bobbin is our coordinator, Lisa Puglielli is the accountability coordinator, and Lisa reported on the number of babies born with low birth weight in Weathersfield, and we are trending upward with more low birth weight babies. So they are working on strategies, moving forward with this information, to work to ensure that mothers receive adequate prenatal care. And PEP is being funded for this year, a new class will be starting soon, PEP is a UConn certified program on people, empowering people, and I do believe this will be the fourth class?
Speaking of third.
Third class, okay. WEP received a Hartford Foundation, Public Giving ten thousand dollar grant for the two gen, two generation work, and their focus is going to be, and it ties into Alice, on family economic stability. The Family Learning Program, which is down at Trinity Episcopal, has an enrollment of ten young pre-K students, and I'm excited, I'll be visiting them and reading to them next week. And Michael Emmett presented and spoke to the group on our school enrollment and demographic study, this report was recently done for our facilities, and I do believe that report is available at Central Office or on our website?
Correct.
Correct. All right, we do have a meeting scheduled, we have another WEP meeting, which will be on February 11th at 4:30. Is there any unfinished business on the board? Okay, so anyone wishing to make a public comment, please come on up to the podium, state your name and address, and may I remind you that we do have a five-minute limit. Okay, are there any board comments? Kelly?
Thank you, I just wanted to speak quickly, I was sick at the last meeting, but I did attend on January 3rd the Weathersfield School Parent Council meeting, and I had a great time meeting, some of the people participating in this, some of them were here today to talk about the cyber safety seminar, which I will be going to, I can't say I'm excited because I'm a little terrified to learn about some of this stuff, but I will be going, and they also spoke about some of the other initiatives and some of the ideas they're tossing around for our schools, some of them include this Sandy Hook Hello program that they're looking to kind of implement in our schools next year, the 2019, 20 school year, they have a WSBC volunteer award ceremony that is now scheduled for May 15th at 7:00 PM, and they're working on promoting a spring free week and four day activities, that week is always very difficult for my household, so any activities are welcome, and they just discussed some of the other items, but I wanted to just let you know that, and they have a lot of interesting and many fun things going on there.
Thank you, Kelly, they are a wonderful group. Anyone else who comments, John?
Thank you, bud. With regards to the parade, I have reached out to Sally Distoli because the parade committee would like to continue with the Silas Dean Middle School eighth grade essay contest as what Memorial Day means to them, and it's been a, you know, a great thing over the years, and that individual that is chosen receives a hundred dollar gift card or savings bond from the parade committee, gets to read their speech at the parade as well as march with us, so that's a real positive thing, and the elementary school poster contest, which was a highlight, those individuals are going to be asked to do this again, their posters were displayed at the council chambers, and it's, people are still talking about it, those posters are in the parade information from last year are on the website of the town. So the parade is in full swing, and I think that it's great that we're working with the schools to continue that collaboration. The other thing I just wanted to give a shout out to the Silas Dean Middle School students tonight, for them to come together and present a student council update that hasn't been in existence for a while means a lot, there's some excitement at the school, and I can't wait for it to continue, you know, the faculty is engaged with it as well as the students, so they're starting small and then working into a larger group, so they've got some good goals and.
Good teachers, that's what I, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they've got good people working there, so, thank you.
Great, thank you, anyone else? I want to comment on Keen on Kids Coalition, which is on our agenda, and it's not part of really our committee setup, but as I've always stated, these meetings are a great example of collaboration among the many different groups that we have in town for our kids. The agenda, and you're going to love these first stats here, the agenda started with a review of the current after-school program, there were approximately a thousand students enrolled this past fall, so this is a hundred more than last year at this time with eleven added new programs. So for the afternoon's program period now, there are already six hundred enrollments, this has really taken off, three hundred more over this time last year, and new programs for this part of the year include crafts and jewelry making, games galore, which are board games, rocketry, intro to improvisation, and my favorite, a musical, the musical E&amp;E at Charles Wright, yoga, woodworking, and Lego involved with STEAM. They are currently working with the town's IT services, I'm putting the information for all these fabulous after-school programs for each school on each school's website. Silas Dean Middle School also has an afternoon program sponsored by Keen on Kids, new programs here include sewing, coding, making, introduction to animal care, as well as intramurals and tutoring. And the library was represented by Brooke Berry, who reported on the teen after-school programs of CD Scratch, Craft Cupcake Wars, emoji cookie decorations, and self-improvement programs. The library also has a book bingo, a winter reading program, and the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten program, eighty-seven children read over four thousand books for that, so that was great. Park and Rec has a winter spring brochure out right now and online, and they have a chess group that is currently sponsored by the Keen Foundation, so they will be participating in tournaments, this originally started as an after-school program by Keen, but as now known as the Keen Foundation Chess Club, and thank you, thank you, and thanks again for all that Keen on Kids does for our students. And I also attended the Hunger Action, and this fits right in with our presentation tonight from Al from United Way on Alice, that meeting was this past Friday, January 18th, there was discussion of the government shutdown and the preparation to support Weathersfield residents or federal workers, the food pantry activities have been very successful, from January to December, fifty thousand pounds of food was distributed to sixteen hundred households, Thanksgiving meals went to a hundred and thirty-five families, holiday gift programs was utilized by a hundred and one families, with Silas Dean Middle School contributing to thirteen families. Dazzling dozens, of which the Weathersfield Public School took the month of November this past year, continues to work under Howie Greenblatt supervision, they're working with organizations, businesses, and corporations to adopt the month of the year to bring in healthy food items and monetary contributions to support the Weathersfield Food Bank. Chartwells was represented by Jamie, do you know I don't know Jamie's last name?
Davies.
I've always called him Jamie, he's like one of those one-name persons, and he reported an increase in lunch and breakfast participating in our schools, and he reported that twenty-six percent of our students participated free and reduced lunch. Silas Dean Middle School continues to show incredible civic responsibility with their generous work as students organize food drives, and very much looking forward to the March Madness event. And the Empty Bowl Project done by our art students will be on again for this spring, more detailed info will be coming up on this. That's all I have to say, but we're going to move right along down there to Eden, no one else have anything, life at the high school.
Thank you, Madam Chair, it's been a very exciting week so far, everyone's favorite midterms, so excited, thanks for the ninety-minute delay today, that was very helpful.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, everyone was pretty frazzled today with the snow and just all the midterms, but you know what, it only gets easier from here, I guess. We're also going to be ready for the annual Safe Breath Dance Raffle and Silent Auction, it is open to all Weathersfield residents on Saturday, March 9th, 2019, from 7:00 to 11:00 at the Pick and Community Center, tickets are thirty dollars per person, please reach out to Lisa Musos for more information.
Okay, thanks, Eden, any questions for you? Okay, so at this time, I make a motion to move to executive session for the purpose of interview for the principal of Silas Dean Middle School, and discussion and possible action on appointment of the principal of Silas Dean Middle School, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Okay, so that concludes the public part of our board meeting, I want to thank you all for coming and for watching, and I want to thank Silas Dean Middle School for setting this up, and good night.